All this meeting, the general meetings in order is six thirty-two according to my calendar. Uh, let's see, we have a call at order here, Ms. Jay.
Present.
Ms. Clemens.
Present.
Counselor Beavis.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And I am here. So we're all present. That's good. Okay, uh, next agenda item is the minutes of August fifteenth. Which I think was in the packing and I had sent out like the day after we had the last meeting, so. Yeah. So I grabbed it at the last meeting, so I wondered if I could move that too. I did do it yesterday, but I don't know. Yeah, they are.
Nora sent them along too.
So do we have any questions or comments on the minutes?
Um, I just have one correction. Um, it's just, see, it's just a, it's just a word. I would, um, under the Wetlands bylaw. You wrote in there, Counselor Ryan said you thought the original setbacks were too large. I would say restrictive instead of large. That was not on the correction.
Copyright and copyright information.
Semantics.
Um, and then under the Wetlands bylaws, they weren't, um, done with any of the questions that I had asked or not? And now.
Any other comments or questions about the, about the agenda? I mean, you know, the minutes.
Should we postpone away until the comments are put in for Ms. Beavis?
If you want to.
I, I just wanted to, um, in, in the fore, the discussion of defense for situation. I asked him some reason, right? We didn't get an answer. He said that he can recall later past the chair reading the need. When, when you said you had a note from Mr. from the town manager, I once again said, is, is this emergency, does have to be done? There was no response. So I just wanted to make clear that I asked it twice, you know, that it was. Because I know that was contention after the fact that I wish somebody had spoken up.
I move to postpone accepting the minutes until the next general government meeting.
Any other comments or questions? I'm watching postcards. Uh, okay, item number four is finalize the Wetlands bylaw and both recommend to count council for three meetings. And so I know that Eric had made the final changes that we had asked about making the legal references for them. Um, are there any comments or questions or anything else you want to say? Eric?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Was there anything else you wanted to say about the Wetlands bylaw?
Do you have the only? I might if you don't mind. On the, the first page, um, in red, um, the second part of red. Says twenty-four hours ago, since the property owner except in the event of emergency. That's not consistent with the general law that you cited earlier. The chapter one thirty subsection forty. Which does give the commission just the right to, or actually their agent also, the right to just visit upon properties. With a doorknob essentially. So. I, I don't know if that should be struck. Because it would make the bylaw essentially weaker than state law. I believe that might be a violation of the Home Rule Charter and things like that. Present, uh, maybe not a violation, but it does make it.
So Master, so Master, the Wetlands Act does not require.
Correct.
I think it's fine to keep it in there. I think it's still good unless it's an emergency to give them notice.
I think that's a, the community, yeah, that's what we decide to do in our community that we give courtesy to.
So for the record, I, I agree with that. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Okay, that's fair.
Just to make sure that.
And so we need it any weaker though.
What was that again?
I thought we couldn't make it weaker. We can make it stronger, but not weaker.
This is more.
I don't know if that necessarily.
This doesn't make the law weaker.
I don't know if it does either, you guys.
It just, it allows for due diligence about communication. It specifies something that the law just is kind of mute on, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
And if I may, are you concerned that because it follows the per MGL, so should we, is it going to be a period? Do we have to delineate something? Um, do you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah, that's, that's.
Seems to be part of MGL and that's what you're worried about.
That's exactly, yeah.
Okay, so you just need to read, so why did, um, how did it appear not in the right form?
I'll own that.
Okay, because if we keep going back to the right form and we.
Gus and I had, had discussed this and said, you know, we just wanted to add the, uh, the chapter and subsection. And it's. I think perhaps maybe at the very end, uh, we could say something along the lines of C. Master General law, chapter one thirty-one, subsection forty as amended. And then that covers us in the event that it is amended in the future and things change.
What about and per the, the town of Southbridge? So you've got per Master General with required local commission identification, documentation, 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 documentation. That's part of the MGL, right? That first sentence, is any of that part of the MGL? With required local commission.
No, well, documentation is not. Um, and identification is.
Yeah, all right. So would it be possible to just per Master General law one thirty-one, section forty, with required local commission identification and town of Southbridge, uh, notification, documentation requirements or whatever. The commission, its agents and officers shall, I don't know, could you just throw in something like that in order to delineate the two different? MGL says this and that says that. I don't know if that's too complicated.
No, I don't think that's necessarily too complicated, but. I just wonder if it's easier to put at the end to say, you know, um. See, MGL, chapter one thirty-one, subsection forty.
Right.
Uh, for relevant, um.
Relevant.
Or additional language, maybe, I don't know. I'm open for suggestions.
Maybe if you put the, um, Master General law chapter at the bottom.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that, that would probably get easier.
Okay.
At the bottom of the paragraph?
Yeah, the bottom of the paragraph.
Yeah. But, um, so is this so long as the property owner consents to the entry or the administrative search warrant is issued by a court?
Not, that is consistent with.
That is consistent, so long as, so if the, so if you go there, notice or not, and the property owner says you can.
Get off, yeah.
You do have to go. Oh, that's good to know. That's a good one. I like that. Uh, for general, okay, so.
We want to make sure everyone's safe, both the council and our commission members.
So are you going to say, are you going to say C, are you going to say per, are you going to?
I would say C.
C Master General law for further clarification or something, or not just C, Master General law chapter?
One thirty-one, subsection forty, yeah.
And then I, I would like to add in there as amended, just as it does cover things.
Right.
If there is something that's added or removed such as, you know.
Right.
That's the property owner consent, let's say that gets, for some odd reason, I don't know why, but if that gets removed. You know, we wouldn't have to amend our bylaws.
Right.
It would just be following along with, with that.
So are you then saying also that it should start with with required local commission identification?
Yes, it just. Yeah.
Could I print to hit each of those names?
Mine is so faded.
Well, this is pretty faded.
No, mine's, mine's almost alone. A lot of people just can't lose sight of it, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You're just wrong.
I do, yeah.
Does do you have that clear at the bottom of how you guys want to pay more attention? Could the boost be greater? If the situation.
It could be. It's going to always be fine, but.
Any other comments or questions or desired changes or?
Can you make sure you read what, how that's going to be before you vote? Because once this is done, it's going up even more. So I want to make sure you've got it written correctly for the, for the final document.
Yeah, as I, as I heard it from what, and like what she just passed me, that, that at the end of that particular paragraph will say, see Master General law, chapter one thirty-one, section forty as amended. For further information, is that what you want to put in?
Required.
Just, just that one?
Yeah, so the, the. Through the chair, so the beginning would start with required, required local commission identification, notification and documentation.
Right.
And then up the.
Are you still, you still think the per general government subcommittee eight fifteen is prior to the C?
That, that will be removed, I think, no. That was just to highlight work of changes, changes were made.
Okay. All right, just making sure.
If you're going to do three readings and there are no three readings, there is the opportunity if something comes bigger and better, to make a change by the third reading, correct?
That's true, yeah.
Even after the third reading.
That's just usually after, yeah.
Before the vote.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And the vote should be after the readings, if not, I'm just saying. So that gives the community time to come in. Okay.
So that was the first one, so the next one was like eight. Actually, they hold another one down eight-eight.
I have something on this.
I know, something.
I just want to say more. Oh.
That's?
Yeah.
Same? Yeah, but that's. And I worry about some negativity. You agree, you don't agree with me? That's not subjectivity. That's because, um, on the conservation commission. I would disagree a little bit, so. Yeah. But I agree.
Right. So do we have any other changes?
Good work, though. You guys have gone back and forth a lot with this.
Yeah, it's been a journey.
So, and I appreciate how long you've gone into it. The only amendment currently then is just to fix that one section on the first page.
Right.
Okay. Well, no, it dates already there. Yeah, tonight, yeah.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Seven.
Is it?
Yeah.
Does that, while Denise is looking for stuff, does anybody else have questions or comments?
That's good. I just read, check it.
No, I just.
No, my computer's not loading yet.
I downloaded my packets before I came because of town Wi-Fi is notoriously bad.
But this is especially bad. I've been having no problems with it for some reason upstairs, but today it's not good.
Because there are paper copies here.
Hang on, it was popular. Any other changes? Going once, going twice, kind of motion?
I move to accept, um, to move the proposed, um, Wetlands protection and conservation bylaws to the council as amended tonight for three readings.
Okay.
And just make sure that we have a copy, actually file, file a copy of it as many files up to the council.
All those in favor?
Minutes?
Screw it, please. So.
Hey, Matt.
It's been a while since we've been looking at this for over two years now. Just, just clarification, you need to make sure it's published, right, in the newspaper?
Yes, you do. But actually, we don't.
No, not anymore.
In the newspaper, we just have to put a, a notice that we're reading it and you have to put the full text on the website.
On the website, no, I just wanted to make.
Yeah, John and I actually talked about that a little bit. I'm also going to try to get hard copies like at the library and down at the police station and a couple of.
Public areas, okay.
Yeah, some places, some people can have it at twenty-four seven if they want.
Yeah, the style matters, look.
Right.
We did that for the public carers for, for the Wetlands bylaws. Uh, we did it for the public carers for, um, the zoning updates that we've done. Aside from like the last couple, because the libraries are still closed when we were doing activities in COVID, so.
Right.
Yes, we're best, we'll make sure that that's.
I'd recommend that, um, also when they, with the town websites, there's that like, uh, like in and in man, you know, like information, like up. Important news or whatever. Not to jump the whole Wetlands by, what you say, Wetlands bylaws being addressed or something, you know, you can find your copy or whatever. Just making sure that it's not something you're trying to find because honestly, too many clicks to find things.
I agree, that should.
I, I'm a little confused with that what you say. I thought it was supposed to be the, you know, the best thing since the last best thing. Which was closer place the terrible thing which right now it's pretty good. Eight, ten years ago, I don't know, it wasn't so bad after all. And that's pretty, this one's pretty. Wait, did you ever find a minute somewhere? You're asking for a lot.
Right, okay. Okay, good. Um, so the next item on our agenda is to discuss the trench, uh, the drone bylaws. I thought we'd do that for a couple of minutes. I don't expect to get anything, I don't expect to get anything done tonight. I'm just trying to bring it back up just to let everybody know that we're not, we're not just going to let that drop because the last council meeting, we voted on it, we voted to do something fairly quickly and get it, get it done so that we can deal with the, the way that, the way we voted the fi, the fire station drone. As an issue, so.
Gus, just before discussion starts, now that's two separate issues, am I correct?
Yeah.
One is the general government is going to handle the rules and regulations for the everyday person, correct?
Basically, that's the idea.
And then the other one, I don't know who would handle, he, he maybe would give rules, regulations and policies for the fire, uh, public safety.
Well, I, well, the, the fire department basically, as I understand it, fire department has its own policy. I was thinking that we would handle, we would be creating bylaw for the town as a whole.
Correct.
And town policy in general for drones. That's the way I understand it. Uh, and that because it, because it may be something that, that goes beyond what the fire department or the police department can use. Because I could see other uses for them and we want to start talking about that and figure out, okay, who gets to use it? Who controls it? Where, where is it housed, you know, who has to, who has to have the training to, to use it? What, who has priority? Obviously emergencies have priority, but how do we set that up?
But I guess my, my question is, is that the, the general gov's going to do a, a bylaw to make it enforceable for drones, am I correct? Is that what the intent?
That was one of the things we're thinking, yeah, yeah.
And then, so, but on the fire department end of it, it is rules, regulations and policy, am I correct?
Could I say something?
Good.
So each department, I mean, they, they make rules, their department heads make rules for their internal use of their equipments and stuff. We, we, it's not in our scope, it's not in their scope frankly, in my opinion, to set policy for how you use safety equipment. Safety equipment, there should be a reason and why for safety equipment. It's nice that they brought forward what they intend, how they intended and a lot of questions can get asked and people might say, well, how are you going to reprimand somebody? How are you going to do things? But ultimately that needs to be, in my opinion, um, that's, those are department type things. And, and I have to differ when Counselor Steve says, oh, you know, who's going to use the dr, the drone, the drone, the drone. The fire department bought a piece of equipment for their department with their department funds. The police department, if they own, have one with their, best, but, but with their, their public. So you would have to have permission in some sorts for taking a piece of safety equipment that was specifically bought within a department. Maybe like saying, well, I'm just going to go use the DBWs, uh, snowplow or whatever.
Absolutely, that's, that's, but we need some sort of a policy to figure out who's doing what, when, who has priority.
You, you don't have a priority over somebody else's equipment, that's.
But, but the vote, but the town owns the equipment.
You can't use the ambulance to drive, to do, to do with somebody that leaves.
I get that, I get that, I get that.
I mean, you know.
The council vote, the council vote that night was that policies, rules and regulations for that fire department drone, they weren't going to fly it until it was approved by council. Yes. Am I correct? Is that how it went? It wasn't so much, it was, we have.
Uphold up.
Yeah, I think, I think they were going to fly it until count, until they knew that there was something in place that, that made sense. I mean, because it didn't seem everything wasn't covered, all the, all the answers, questions hadn't been answered as far as who was being trained, how it was being trained, all those types of things.
Yeah, who else has access to it in what circumstances?
But ultimately, I think that. Wow, you run slippery slope and you start getting involved in the interdepartmental works. That is not the purview of the town council. Policy and procedure for the town is one thing.
That's what I'm talking about, setting a policy, how the departments work.
Interdepartment. Interdepartment. Except if you get some, the, the policy, the departments, well, soon as you do this, they.
We have too many people talking, Mr. Jay. Can we please have Ms. Clemens just talk?
Sorry, I'm on my bed.
I think you got, I, I think you got my idea. I mean, you guys, you're going, whatever, I'm just not, yeah.
Let's see what the vote says. Oh, wait on me, you can follow my bars, that's fine. Let's do our again item.
Okay, so, so maybe we should focus on a drone bylaw for now. Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Elected officials.
I think we, I think we agree that that needs to be. The other issue may be a little bit. Okay, so any thoughts or, any thoughts I had at this point? Has anybody had a chance to do a little looking? Mike, good.
The one thing I wanted to say as far as policy though, isn't that in the charter that only the council can set policy?
Yep, that's true, exactly.
That's official town policy, that's not interdepartmental policy, it's very different. It's very different.
So how do we know what the charter says? That's the kind of, it's weird overlap between town policy, the town use of equipment and interdepartmental use of the same equipment. It's kind of, it is a weird gray zone, I accept that.
The problem with the process, the cow is put before the horse. The purchase was purchased and then all the discussion happened after the purchase.
Sure.
The thing is, it's, it's not that, once we found out and people were doing homework on drones aiming at public safety, um, it has a purpose, they use it for different reasons. But it was explicit in all people that work with drones for the state and the federal government. And we've had paperwork come in that was very detailed that, you know, we would hope that the, the fire department works hand in hand with government to accomplish what we need to do to make it work for the town's outreach. But in the, coming out of the gate, it doesn't seem to be they know what they're talking about compared to all the other drone operators that we have. Uh, it's not supposed to be the deputy chief or the chief, it's supposed to be a drone person represented by the town. Uh, in the structures that we saw, and, and this is something that's on the national stage, uh, guys way above my pay scale. Um, and, and the thing is, we want to just do it right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a piece of equipment for the department. The department has to figure it out. We've pumped them with a bunch of data and that they can work with and see what they come up with. But at the same time, we're, we're, we hope to work hand in hand with the chief.
Absolutely.
To find that common ground.
I agree.
I, I, I agree a lot of what you said, Counselor Loza, and, and I don't, it, it, the cart and the horse and, you know, how you use a drone is different than how you use a Jaws of Life. I still, you know, I think perhaps that purchase was an odd purchase because it was such a new technology and all. Yes, I agree with that. On the other hand, it's still, you know, it's still a piece of equipment. So, but ultimately, it has to follow the rules of everybody else. And certainly, I think council weighing in on, on that information is very important. I just think down the road, drones are probably going to just be like the Jaws of Life or like something else for a lot of, or like police, whatever, you know, whatever you need. I don't know, because I'm not a police officer. But I'm just saying, you know, it is a piece of equipment, so.
Well, that's, that was my point earlier about doing it as a, for various other departments that may need to use it.
For, um, but not you, so you've got to be careful. Because the fire department bought that, the fire department, the police might fire something for their department. You can't just, as a council, say, we say you should let them use it. I mean, that's just a little bit, that's, you're, you're, you're tedious ground there. So I think, I think it's, I don't know.
You guys got hands all over the place, so, uh, Mr. Manek.
I have a notice in the town bylaws under chapter four, two oh one, point seven. It says, policy formulation for departments. It says the town manager acting through the directors of departments shall be responsible for the overall supervision of the departments of the town. Government establishment, priorities and policies to govern the operations of the town departments and agencies. She sounds like departmental policies.
Day to day operations.
I, 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 I understand, I'm not, I'm kind of bouncing off you a bit. Um, because I don't want to get involved in departmental policy. I want to see if we can create, craft a, a townwide policy for government, for our town government's use of drones. Where the people in, like the part, the departments that may not normally use drones would have access to town drones so that we don't necessarily have to have, buy dozens of them or several, multiple drones. And if there's any way we can do that without, you know, having several of them floating around, you're only getting used once in a great while. I think it would make more sense to see if we can figure out a policy about sharing the town's, the town's property in a way that, for example, um, the health department can use it if it needs to use it or planning can use it if it needs to use it on the, on the rare occasions that that would be necessary. But, but police and fire obviously have priority. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, I could liken it to one more thing. When we borrow the lights for, um, for like an event, like lights on the common. For the, for the divisions, the, the fire department will bring that big light, you know, for the common. But the fire department is willing at that moment and has the manpower. If for some reason by any chance the manpower is not available, then they don't do it. But if they are available, they can do it. I think what you're still suggesting makes no sense because the only people trained are going to be the people in those departments, not every single person in every single department. So the only way to use it would be with explicit permission and, uh, cooperation of the department. And that's just, so I don't think we need, you know, okay.
I, yeah, I really thought this was more about working on the town by, the bylaw for everybody, not just the town people.
I agree, we need to do that too.
That's what we should be focusing it on, that's the agenda.
I, I agree, you do do that. You do need to do that.
This is all sidebar, it's wonderful, but sidebar.
We need to do that. I do too, agree, we need to do that.
I think that we should leave the interdepartmental day to day operations to the town manager and the departments. If the departments want to have some kind of mutual agreement in their internal policy, then that should be the purview of, you know, between the town manager and the fire department. Um, certainly with communication, you know, to, because it is such an important issue with the drones. Certainly with communication, I think the information, um, sharing is important with the town council. But I do think that they're two separate things and we should just focus on creating a bylaw around the use of drones.
Your problem here, okay, we do have a couple of other people listening here. I see Cory, Cory's been up for a while. Just a while, Scott, go.
Nobody wants to do the fire department's job. We understand that.
No, exactly, exactly.
And I think that what we, what we have to keep in, in the forefront as a council is we have a town manager. We have a department that does their job through the town manager. The council has a job of oversight and accountability when you look at liability, positioning. The police department does not have a, a drone, um, but in all applications, there should be one person in charge of the drone. I didn't invent that, neither did the fire department. It is a national estate requirement. Uh, and suggest it to all people that are in a municipality that own a drone, that it should be one person to be called on and in charge of it. Where the police have an issue and they call the fire department, the fire department is in charge of it and they respond to the, to the call. It's like calling the ambulance. We have, we overlapped our, uh, it's similar to, uh, our dispatch. It used to be the fire department, now it's a police department. It's a team concept. Nobody's sitting there saying, no, not my thing, I want. It's a team concept, nobody's sitting there saying, no, not my thing, I want to tell you what to do. I think, done properly, it'll work, and I think it'll be fine. It's just, we're not at that point, uh, policy wise, not even at the departmental level, we're not even much working on, and I agree that you should be working on the town one right now until the chief, you know, comes up on what's supposed to be happening on his side.
Cory.
Sorry Cory Shenier, just to back that, you know, you need a FAA one oh seven license to operate a drone commercially, so. He is hundred percent correct, you can only have that, uh, person, I'm only saying just a little bit for you real quick, because I was, uh, in talks with my old company and starting a drone project with, uh, the construction aspect of it. So you also need to pay attention to what the capabilities of that drone is. Um, some of the stuff, like you said, you want to do cross stuff, well, your drone may not be capable of doing what you're looking to do in other departments, like geomapping, um, you, you could do inspections. Not all drones are capable of that, so you need to look at what the capabilities of the drone that was purchased before you can go any further. Highly suggested that, uh, you would look at a, um, company out there that deals with starting drone operations within a business or a town and getting some insight from them because it's, it's not an easy task to, uh, to start. Um, investing in the drones is gonna be a way in the future, no matter what, it's coming to that world. But you need to have professional outlook on this because there is a lot of parts to it that, uh, need to be met and, and depending on what you're really looking to do is gonna determine the pieces of equipment you purchase, uh, so you may be multiple pieces to, to go in the route that you're looking to post, just, just that.
I, I think we're arguing today about something that's going to be very different, like you just said, five years down the road. The police department will have their own drone, the highway department will have their own drone, um, it's, it is, I, they're coming down in price so fast that, you know, now everybody's gonna get one, as we said last time, for Christmas. If, if we try to say at this point that these two people, these two departments have to share this, uh, we're, we're making a rule for something that five years from now, people will laugh at and try to figure out what in the world we were thinking about.
That sometimes does happen.
Yes, I think we should just do a, a, I can't drive, fly my drone over your house because you can't shut it down.
I think it would be beneficial to have, um, Deputy Chief Hewle come back and present, um, because he had a lot of information, um, based on the questions that we're hearing today that, um, you know, he researched this for quite a while, um, and he had a lot of information that could shed light to some of the questions that people have. So I think it might be beneficial just, just to kind of put that to another meeting and kind of focus on the bylaw.
Okay, I see a whole bunch of hands up. Uh, let me see here, Dave, I see Dave, Maureen, Jackie.
So, just a, just a, uh, I took a YouTube video on it, was vote to, which was an amendment that was made by me, uh, to get it passed, uh, vote to amend use of a drone, once a proper policy is approved by the town council. I do agree with, uh, Ms. Clements as well, so we can try to figure out how we can do that. Does need to go back to a subcommittee or anything like that for a long conversation, but if, if we had to stick by that motion, then, you know, if Deputy Hewle can come in, give a quick brief, we can support that at that point in time in town council. But I do agree with, uh, uh, Ms. Clements on that, right, I believe you may be able to set that up, I'll bounce on that.
Maureen, then Jackie.
Why don't you get Jackie first, because she's not gonna have that.
You had it up too, so, okay.
Um, I just was gonna say, and, um, the rule in reg is nice, but I think we should be looking at mono bylaws.
Yeah.
Or bylaws that have been passed in other communities to be basing our thing on, this is what we're looking at, is it an internal policy? This isn't really, this is great for an internal policy, but this is not, this is not the way you'd set up a bylaw. So I would really like to see it actually, like some mono bylaws from other communities, so we can make sure we have a good draft bylaw that's in accordance with a lot of other communities.
We seem to be in agreement on that, in general, it seems to be a general consensus, so, unless somebody else has something specific to say, um, can we turn to bylaws?
Yeah, in regards to, sorry. In regards to writing bylaws, uh, just, I don't know if this has been discussed, but FAA has, uh, laws regarding drones and flying, I'm sure, so. Just make sure you don't run afoul of those.
Yeah, that was what.
You don't mess with the federal government.
Well, that was one of the issues that, that the last time around when we started talking about this issue, I had sent around a link to, that includes, a bunch of stuff that included a link to a city of Newton court case that specifically ran afoul of every law, so that was one of the issues why I sent it out. Um, so, okay, regarding, specifically regarding bylaws, do we have any thoughts at this point to start on? Cause I, in the last, the last packet, the last packet of stuff that included, um, text from, I think it was Chick, if I remember correctly, it was Chickapie and Holyoke. I know Belcher Town has one, um, Boston has one, but, but it says they have one, I'm trying to find it, um, because they, I didn't go to their website, I don't see a reference actually to drones in the section of the, the link goes here, so, whether it's there, I'm not sure, um, but, okay, Cory.
You may want to reach out to your neighbor in town, Chappell PG, they do have a drone, um, one of their offices is the operator for it, so they're right next door, just, just a heads up.
Yeah, do you know if they have a bylaw that can?
I don't, so you have to reach out, so they're coming up. It's just a next door phone call.
That's all right, right.
I just have a question, um, and this may help you all decide about the sharing part, is don't drones need insurance, each and every drone?
Yes.
I would imagine they do, yes.
No, yes is the answer.
So that might be an important point to figure, and, um, which, you know, if you're thinking about interdepartmental, which I think is the manager's purview, but which departments would want to use it? We have Matt right here, would you want to use it?
It could be possible for inspection or something, but, uh, if, if the drone that they have is capable of doing that kind of thing, I would assume that they would, uh, be the ones flying it and we would just be kind of viewing and, and assisting them.
Just a quick comment, I hate to see, you, you put a lot of time into this, I think Jackie's right, move on with your town policy. Because the bottom line comes down to is, uh, Deputy Chief Hewle is learning, we are learning, we are all together thinking about, you know, we want to do it right. And I think, uh, a drone is new to the fire department, it's new to everybody, and as Martina has said, it's the thing of the future and we need to get our head around it down at department level to understand the federal and state laws, how you have to do it, thank you back, if anyone wants to share.
I think at the town council meeting, we asked the police chief and the fire chief, they're gonna be using it together, they both of them put in policy together. And I think the police chief got, and, uh, the fed, federal policy, they're gonna give them a copy, uh, and then not, any department can use it because you have to be trained, obviously. Any department they're gonna use it, you're gonna take that training person, have the license to fly the, the drone, so it's not like anybody can go grab it and go ahead and use that, so.
Okay, so as far as bylaws go, to get away from the whole drone, internal drone policy stuff, um, George.
Well, I'm, I'm just reading some stuff now, a lot of the town bylaws is actually they follow the rules and regulations that were set forth by Massachusetts and by the FAA, the federal government.
Right.
And it's the two things you have to look at, the commercial use and the recreational use.
Right.
And, and the part that plays into a big part over here is the, the, uh, the airport. So I think prior to drafting any regulation or bylaw, is to look at what the law of Massachusetts says, and it's called, uh.
From what I understand, there is no active laws in Massachusetts.
It's, it may be responsible for regulating drones in the state of Massachusetts, is the Federal Aviation Administration. And it said general rules for flying drones in Massachusetts, and they risked a whole, whole bunch of stuff. And it says are drones allowed in Massachusetts, drones are allowed in Massachusetts for recreational and commercial use, subject to FAA regulation. And flight controls.
Right.
And flight controls put in place by local government, so that's the part that you have to work your bylaw on. But it's, it's, it's very explicit, uh, I, I think the subcommittee should probably get a copy of this and review it. And then from there, you either build a bylaw or figure that drone use is, is, is not capable for a bylaw, say. Uh, they, they, they speak about Boston, they speak about Chickapie, they speak about, uh.
Are you looking at dronelaws.com?
No, I'm looking at, it's on the Massachusetts site.
Yeah, the one, the one I called up is dronelaws.com and had, had the state law going on, so it may be the same page you're looking at.
Could be, it just says drone laws in Massachusetts.
Yeah, that's the one I have.
Yeah, so I think if you can get a copy to everybody on the committee and they can review it, and then the determination can be made. Is there enough of the law to cover the, uh, the way you don't even have to do a bylaw? I mean, if, if you can go above and beyond, I mean, people talk about you fly a drone over their house.
Right.
It's illegal to shoot them down, no matter for any reason, so if they're flying, you know, but, well. I think if you get that first and then build your case from that point on, I mean, all we're gonna do tonight is keep passing the buck around and around. I think if you start with the document and build from there, we'd be better off.
That, that's, that's why I sent out several of those references the last time around, so everybody should have them at this point. So what are your thoughts?
Well, I think it'd be nice if we all got a copy, I think, okay? I mean, the, the emails with the attachments and all that, you get 10,000 of attachments and, you know, honestly, I'm not printing a hundred pages at a time at home.
No, I'm not gonna.
Sometimes I send up the body, um, but, you know, it would be nice once in awhile to actually get something that we can all look at and not worry about our laptops or worry about, you know, which I don't bother for, phone occasionally. But, I mean, let, let's sit down and let's work it out so that we have, you know, stuff in front of us. Because I don't think having to stare at the screens and, and where did it go, um, is, is as easy as saying, here it is, cross it off, write it down, oops, I made a mistake, you know. So let, let's go back to the old school a little bit on a couple of things and. Mr. Chair, you're in charge.
I move to postpone this item until the next posted general government meeting. And I request all the materials that have been sent previously to be included in the packet, as well as the site listed by Mr. Shenier.
Yeah, I've got it, I actually have.
Relevant materials, let's not waste trees, relevant materials.
Yeah, I actually have the.
Not page, not a hundred page.
I can, so the citizen members get it too?
Yes.
Yeah, you just gotta go and get it, I asked for mine.
Somebody wants to second it, that's fine, I was planning.
Oh, have a good second.
I was planning on doing that in there, because we're gonna, we're gonna finish it, and then you can do that. So there is a motion, it's, okay, I'll be prepared. Okay, so that is the end of agenda, agenda for tonight, so, uh, Mike, I guess it's time to call up the, uh, the joint gen gov and DPW meeting, which is specifically.
We need to adjourn.
The joint first.
Well, actually, it's, it's actually rolling over, we adjourn at the end of the joint meeting. Because we had, because it's called, it's posted as a joint GP, deep gen gov DPW meeting.
Yeah, ours is.
But we, we have ours open with an adjournment on there.
Ours is posted first, we need to adjourn and then.
It's two different meetings.
Yes, it is two separate meetings.
Okay, fine, I'll do it that way.
I would also like to make a comment about.
Necessary adjournment.
It's the way, the agenda that's posted, so I move that we adjourn the gen, joint general government town council meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? And it's seven sixteen, okay.